Or we've got to buy a new file again. But it's something that we need to address as soon as possible. Right now, according to our IT people, the work that Scott or Cassie's doing now is being backed up on their own computers. It's not being backed up on the server. So if something happens to one of your computers...
You're screwed.
You may have a problem. But basically, I think that's the problem. We can overcome the problem pretty easy. But yeah, I think we're going to contact our IT people tomorrow and say, is there, you know, what can we buy? There's memory that you purchased that is separate from the memory from the server. What do you call it?
The external hard drive.
The external.
Yeah, I was just going to say, can't you get a, to get you by until we, so we don't lose anything?
Yeah, that's what we did. We put the, we purchased two external hard drives to put on probably our two most important computers.
How much did you, how much gigabytes were that?
Um, I found them on sale for, they were about seventy, eighty dollars apiece.
I mean, how much?
For a terabyte.
Oh, for a terabyte, yeah.
A terabyte? No. I mean, that's a, that's a Band-Aid that leaves.
If that's, I'm not familiar with the police department server. If that's a, if that's working for you now, then that's great. But I would recommend then looking for a resolution.
We know that the work is being backed up on the two most important computers. And we know that the work that the officers are doing on their individual computers is backed up on their own computers. But we're at the point, Ben, where there's no question that, that we're going to have to, we have to have more memory.
But shouldn't they be backed up on other, they should all be tied into one computer, shouldn't they? Without...
They're tied into one server.
I'm saying that somebody's backed up on one, somebody's backed up, that doesn't sound logical. Sounds like you could have a story.
Their own work, their own work is being backed up. A UOR, Uniform Offense Report that they do is being backed up. It's not only backed up on their computer, it's also backed up on a hard copy. Don't you, hard copy all over the UORs?
Yes, we have a hard copy. Our biggest concern is particularly the evidence room computer.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
That is really pushing the limit to try and back that up on the server because if that crashes, we're, we're in a world of trouble.
Well, I'm bringing it to you, but it's, it's not the kind of decision that you, that you should make tonight. You need to listen to the three experts.
So do you want...
And you need to do it as soon as possible.
You're just making a financial matter.
Well, no, I'm speaking of the two IT guys from, and Ben. I mean, the, I mean, the finance committee is, is more literate than I am, but, but we're not really literate. I mean, as far as, well, I mean, is all these computers, all these technical things.
So you want the finance committee to get good dates to you when, when we can meet everybody separately and then we'll pull together?
I mean, if you agree to that.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Mary, is that a good thought?
Is there a possibility, you can let us know when the IT people from Campbell County and Mr. Baker can, is available? Because I'm pretty available any day.
I need a few dates thrown out if you're talking in the afternoon. I'm sure Virgil would, too.
Michael.
I'll set it up.
Or tomorrow morning.
Very good. Thank you.
With that, I'm finished. There are no handicaps at the science this week.
You want to move on to the streetlight requirement? We're talking...
This, this lady, and she's a lady, a friend of Malford, Malford?
Malford.
Is asking for a streetlight on her street. And we went up there and investigated. There's a 9,000 lumina streetlight directly across the street from her house. There's two 11,000 lumina streetlights on, within 200 feet of her house. It would, I, it would not be my, it would be my recommendation that you deny this request. It is unnecessary.
Additionally, how much does each streetlight cost?
It costs us $1,900 today to install it. And then if it's a 9,000 lumina streetlight, then it's going to cost us $972 a month. But if it's 11,000 lumina streetlight, then it's going to cost $19 a month. We're spending over $100,000. And I'll tell you again, and I'll tell you again and again, streetlights are for lighting streets. They're not for security. If people want a security light, they need to put a pole through their house or in the back of their house. Streetlights are for lighting streets.
Is that why she wanted it?
Uh, I, I do not know the reason she wanted it. Donna, can you see the lightness?
She just came in to pay her taxes one day, said she's down by the new development and it's dark down there and she would like to request a streetlight.
Well, after investigation, I appreciate her as a citizen and taxpayer, but I cannot recommend.
Okay, also at this time, I need a motion to have Bobby Allen serve on the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council Government, the OKI Board for Transportation. Bobby has historically done this throughout his career in Dayton and that wish is to continue.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made or seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does? Hopefully everyone had a chance to read the minutes from the November 5th City Council meeting. If there are no changes or corrections, any motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have an order 2013-11R, which is a policy on payment of overtime.
Kenny, you might want to, later I got change of date.
Okay. We're good to go. Okay. So now we're going to have the reading of order 2013-11R, which is a policy on the payment of overtime.
Being ordered by the city of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky, that any and all employee leave with or without pay, including but not limited to vacation, sick leave, personal leave, disability leave, leave of absence, suspension, or otherwise, shall not be included as hours worked in calculation of overtime pay. Section two, this order shall be signed by the mayor, attested by the city clerk, recorded and shall be in effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Will you allow permission at this for me?
Sure. Yes, sir, I'll make it. Over the many years, various city councils, not this one, not maybe the last one, somebody makes a motion. Well, I make a motion, we pay overtime to employees even though they don't work 40 hours a week. And it gets a second, the motion's made and it goes on, goes in our minutes booths. The personnel policy has never changed. You only get overtime in Kentucky after you work 40 hours. You don't get it if you take a vacation for four days and then take, and then come into work and work an extra hour. You have to work 40 hours to get paid for overtime. This has always been confusing to Donna. It's always been confusing to a lot of people. It's never been confusing to me because I know what the federal labor law says and the state labor law. If you go to three Sundays ago and you look in the newspaper, you'll see the city of Elsmere. Or it's similar things. And the Kentucky auditor is calling them in the task. If you go look at the minutes from the Bellevue's last meeting, what'd they do in the last meeting, Donna?
They changed terms. They used to pay based on like where we was doing and they just made a change in their personnel policy.
It is my opinion that, that if this city council wants to change a personnel policy or ordinance, then you have an order written up, have it scanned by the, by the city attorney and you change an order. But these motions that have been made 20, 30 years ago are really not relative. And we have been paying employees who don't, overtime, who don't work 40 hours. Well, according to the Kentucky auditor, that's a misappropriation, that is a misappropriation of public funds. You will also see, and I wish Jay Brewer was still here, you will also see, I talked to, to a lot of my comrades and a lot of city managers and administrators in North Kentucky and Indian Kentucky. As a result of the Dayton audit, Dayton school audit, the auditors now are testing these payroll reports, which they should test. It's my recommendation that you adopt this order, that it puts us back into compliance and nobody's going to take a cut in pay. And a police officer, so he goes to court, he's going to get two hours. And if he, he'll get paid two hours overtime if he works 40 hours before he works the two hours. But he won't get paid the overtime, he'll get paid straight time or she. This is not a disreaction, this is not anything that anybody's done wrong. This brings us into compliance.
So a person's on vacation, they get a 40-hour vacation check.
Correct.
All of a sudden, they get caught back into work. That's not overtime to them?
No, that is straight time.
Dennis, what happens if, I'm going to give you two scenarios. First one is this, this thing you sent around to us or this email you sent, you talked about comp time. And I don't know if hourly employees, employees have comp time only, I mean, salary people can have time, comp time, but hourly people can't. Is that correct?
Not in this city.
I thought all comp time went away and I, I questioned that.
Well, in this city, there is a motion that we no longer, as salaried employees, we no longer can accumulate comp time.
Right. And what about hourly employees?
In Kentucky now, as a result of legislatures two or three years ago, employees can choose to take overtime or comp time.
And they can build that comp time up?
And that's, we're going to do that right now with Officer Justice. She had built up comp time and she'll be paid until...
It should, this should have been the last pay.
This would be the last pay, but, but, but you can build it up.
Let me ask you this scenario. We have a tremendous snowstorm come in and one of our employees works from eight at night to eight in the morning. That's 12 hours. He goes home, he comes in, the next night they have another ice snowstorm and he works Tuesday, Tuesday night, eight to 12, eight to eight, that's 24 hours he's worked. Then he takes three days vacation, that's 48 hours. He's not going to get paid for that eight hours overtime?
No.
Straight time.
He gets paid straight time.
My opinion, if you, if you have an employee who works 12 straight hours for you, two days in a row, he's entitled to that eight hours overtime.
But it's law.
Right. It's my opinion that the Fair Labor Standards Act overrule what we think is fair or not pay. You don't, you cannot pay an employee overtime unless they work over 40 hours. Now, if you don't adopt this, you know, you're, I don't know that anything will happen. I don't know that anything will happen. But I'm just telling you, the cities up and down this river, Bellevue just needed last week.
And I respect that. But what I'm saying, my belief is in some way, you know, especially in a safety issue, if they're work, out there working 12 straight hours in a snowstorm to protect us, they're entitled to eight hours overtime. That's my opinion.
They would, they would be if they didn't take vacations.
I can say this, Dennis, you're probably right because when I was on the force 150 years ago, I worked 60 hours a week. It was all straight time. That's right.
And what if, okay, Kathy brought up a good point. What if they work the, say, two, two 12-hour days and they, and then they work eight-hour days Wednesday, Thursday and Friday? Would they get it then?
Yeah, because they're working.
Yes. It, it, it's fair to say that this is a change. I'm encouraging the department heads to, to work the change in as much favor of the employee as we can ethically do that. But this change is necessary. This is not, we're not, we're not, we're not making this up. I mean, this is, and I guess just as important, these, some of these rules were before Jack Fisher received them. I mean, so, so...
Ooh, that makes it old.
But, but, but I can show you in your own personnel manual, it says 40 hours. But, but, but what I want to make to you, if you don't vote in the affirmative, if you don't vote for this, then it's my opinion that you're still in violation of federal law and Kentucky law. Well, that's a, let me ask, I believe every word you're saying, Jack, he's right. We're hearing it from the attorney. If we don't do this, it'll be against the law. I mean, I know where bills come from and exactly where they come from. I did all that. But I, we never got overtime and I'm not saying they should get it or not get it, but...
We got, the attorney's saying, what can we do? Okay, the motion on resolution 2013-11R, or order?
I, I motion that we accept 2013-11R.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded, are you in the comments? Get a roll call.
Member Hurt?
Aye.
Member Byrne?
No.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Allen?
Aye.
Member Gifford?
No.
Motion passed. Moving over to Department heads, report, Chief O'Brien.
I don't have anything specific. The, the report I put in front of you is a little different flavor report than what I normally give you. What this report does, it still categorizes everything, but it breaks it down by days of the week. This is for the month of November, so you can take a look at that and kind of get an idea of what kind of runs and calls are be, being taken through different times of the week. This is how we gauge a lot of our, our hot times of the day, our, our hot days of the week, that we, we need to spend a little more time in certain areas or put extra staff on, on certain days.
Do we have any questions for you?
No.
Bobby, have you anything to your clerk's office? Donna, you have anything to vote for?
I just got a couple of things. Right now, I'm working on the urban vacant and blighted properties, get the list out to the PVA and, and the letters out to the properties that are going to be on that list that makes sure taxes go up because they've got vacant and blighted properties. Hopefully, they'll go out by the end of the month. We've got a couple of properties that were foreclosed on and the, and the banks have, said they have no interest in them. The people are willing to sign them over to the, to the city. We're working on those to get, get the information to Jock that he needs and, and try to use some blighted properties with people in them. Got a code enforcement meeting on December the ninth and we've got a board of justice meeting on December the 11th. And that's about it.
Don, I have a question for you. I was approached by Mr. Byrd, I think it's Paramount he's on. There's a building that someone has redone and it's a multiple dwelling building that looks like it's for sale up at the top of Locust.
Okay.
The windows are all open all the time. And my question is, is it occupied or, or they don't look like they're broke out, they're just open?
It is, it is occupied in the, in the rear of the building. The owner and a couple of, I think a man and a woman live there, live in there. That building is actually a single, was built for a single family home, believe it or not.
Big family, huh?
That's a big one. But it's got several violations and we've been working on that in the past and will continue to work on it.
Donna, I got a couple of questions for you. What's it say in our guidelines then what people can put trash cans out? I mean, I seen trash cans out this morning, about seven o'clock this morning for trash pickup tomorrow.
You're allowed to have, your trash cans out 24 hours ahead of time and you're allowed to have them, you have to have them back in within 24 hours after.
It just seems like a long time to put them out, you know, six o'clock one day for them to pick up the next day. Okay, and, and the, the house up at Eighth, on Eighth Street, at the top of Dayton, it was a burnout a couple of years ago. What's going on with that? Did a, did a, is the bank got that or, it's right at the top of Dayton Street?
That, yes and no. The Fifth Third Bank is foreclosed on it, but they no longer have an interest in it. So it belongs to Brian Tumber, but it was foreclosed on that he no longer has an interest in it. So the only thing we can do is, is head it with code violations until we get it in court.
So the bank don't want it and the owners don't want it and we're, so we're just stuck? Is that...
That's basically right.
That's what happens.
Yes, no?
I've got a question, Donna, on the board of adjustment meeting. What's the subject on that?
There's some properties in Dayton that want to go from a two-family to a one-family and we, and we wait till we get several of them and then we come in there. That's what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief, want to give a report?
A few things. November's a very busy month for the firefighters. They've been very busy testing out on ISAC, which is International Fire Service Accreditation. Begins with a written test and then after the written test, they have to perform hands-on evaluations. And doing this, this pretty much puts us up to par with the state codes and really helps when writing grants, having our firefighters accredited. So I've been very fortunate, the guys went through that all this, this month. Also, it kind of fell into where we hosted a officer development school at Damar College in Bellevue. Very nice facilities. We actually, it was, the company was called Traditional Training and it was a DC fire chief and Clearwater fire chief that came down for two, two days to teach. It was a 16-hour course. We had about 50 firefighters from here to Covington, Green Township, Florence, the International Airport. It was all hands-on, far as interacting with live scenarios on, on video. And they went over numerous topics on calling out to the scene to a May Day, dealing with press, dealing with your company. And I think the guys got a lot out of that. It was a very good class. We got a lot of good feedback out of that. We're wanting to do that again next year. Different topic, of course, but the same company. Let's see, Lincoln was at the fire department this month, on the 20th, this past month, November. Kindergarten came up, 12 o'clock class and the nine o'clock class, went over some more fire safety and went over the apparatus. This month, we've also been working with, we adopt 10 families for Christmas and we will be going out on December 23rd at 6:00 PM with Santa Claus to provide food and toys. And that's something we've been doing now for like 12, 12 years. Our second series of winterizing fire hydrants, we just finished that up, but it was a total of 279 hydrants. We did find three that were leaking and Water District was notified. They will be repairing those three hydrants and when the hydrants are repaired, they will let us know and we'll put them back in service. Our new medic unit is in service. They probably sit on the street a lot. It's been busy the last two days. I think we've done like 15 runs. So it's running good. Our other medic unit is getting serviced right now and it will be a backup in case something would happen to our, our new life squad. Just to make it clear that both of them will not be in service at the same time. One will be if the other one goes down. I do have a license to wear the fireworks night. If Dayton has an event or Bellevue and they request to have a squad on scene, I can pull that in and create overtime and actually put you on the street. That is an option we do have. And our next fire board meeting will be here, City Dayton Council Chambers, December 18th. That will be at 6:00. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just back up one question? Scott wanted to ask you a question. I had received a, a letter in the mail from the Campbell County Police for a donation for their Christmas. We made the donation, but it also hit on there that the different police departments said, can you, can we, can the money be diverted to just Dayton or is it just for the county? And I don't care where it goes, but it, on this letter, it had Dayton, Bellevue, Newport, et cetera, et cetera. Do you know?
That's, I'm not familiar with that. That's a, that's a county...
A shop with a Santa or...
Yeah, it's a, it's a shop with a cop and that part I am familiar with. We usually do participate in that where officers take different kids out to purchase some toys and...
But the monies go to only to the county or does it come back to the city of Dayton?
If it's a shop with a cop, it involves children from those cities.
Okay.
So children from Dayton would also be involved in that also.
Okay, thanks.
Michael?
As the mayor mentioned earlier, we've got light up Dayton coming up this Sunday. He kind of gave you the rundown, but I just wanted to remind everybody, the Civic Club is, is putting that on and I think they've got volunteers that'll be down there at nine so they could, they could always use an extra hand if you're not doing anything. Go down to VFW, give them a hand. The Civic Club and the Main Street Group have been meeting together for the last couple of months with the idea of merging both groups since we both kind of try to accomplish the same things. It just kind of makes sense. Both groups work on very little volunteer manpower and forming both groups kind of gave everybody a sense of, of new energy and new ideas. So we decided at the Main Street meeting to, to merge both groups under the Main Street Board. And I want at this meeting to, to recommend to the mayor and to council the approval of the Civic Club members to the Main Street Board. And those Civic Club members include Denise Ashford, Deana Seamer, Roy Seamer, Donna Ledger, Kim Townsley, Paula Ash, Jane Hebel and Alan Smith. I'd like to recommend that these individuals become eligible Main Street Board members with full voting rights at this time, so.
We've changed any of our ordinance, right?
Yes. Yeah, the Main Street Board is a, is a city board with five members?
No, no, we've got, I think right now we've got six, I believe. And Main Street Groups, and Main Street Boards can have unlimited members on the board. You have, it, it breaks down into subcategories as far as based on the four points of Main Street, but there's no limit to, to Main Street Board members.
Is the historic board at five?
Historic board is five, that's correct.
Okay. You're right.
I'm writing that down on this paper somewhere.
Tom and Doris, you're smurfing back there. That's one thing, he said, I can't hear, I'm not on the train.
Do we need to change anything or can we just accept the recommendation?
We're not in a big rush for this, let us check into it.
Well, I mean, there isn't a Main Street or City Ordinance, so I don't know if that would need to be changed, but...
What do you need, Mike? Any answer, okay?
There isn't.
No, there isn't.
Is it confirmed with Donna?
In the past, I just, I recommended board members to you all because a few have changed over the years, so I wanted to recommend those to you all. I do also want to mention that Leslie Carr, who serves on both the Main Street and Board of Architectural Review, is stepping down from both boards. So we will lose her, but we are gaining Civic Club members. And like I said, we've met for the last couple of months and it's kind of a group consensus that everybody feels this is in the best interest of both groups, so. That's what I've done in the past, so I figured I'd kind of follow the same suit that I had to do.
Do you need a motion for that, Jack?
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to put all those names on it.
But I thought, Jack, you said you wanted to look into it. And I, I don't care about your motion, Bobby, but...
I want to verify.
Yeah.
I don't need to verify, but I'm...
You're right.
I believe, I think that he's right, that there is no specific ordinance.
Oh, well, what I'm saying, before we make a motion, we need to...
I don't have the co-board in front of the code book.
Right, right. No, I, I'm not having no problem with the people going on, I just want to make sure everything's...
Is there a second for Bob's motion?
Do you want some people on and...
I'll wait till...
I'll second it pending...
Pending Jack's verification.
It's an annual label, he says, he said it's all right.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.